Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Life. I'm Linda Pan. I'm your host. A little snowy out there. It's stopped, but the plows are just beginning to get out. I don't, not a lot of plowing going on. They salted. So it's a little slick out there, but it's not freezing. So it's not bad brushing off the car or anything. But expect a little, add a little time because you want to go a little slow, not stopping so easily out there. So anyway, but it's a light fluffy snow. And as I say, it's cold enough that it's not wet. So I don't know if they had a meeting last night, John, or what's going on. We're just watching the traffic and the plows and everything going on out there. I don't know. Do they have a delay? A school delay?
Not that I know of.
I suspect they might. We'll see. It's only because, you know, I was a little surprised when I came out this morning and usually, because I'm on top of a hill, they usually plow it. No plow. But they did salt during the night at some point.
Well, they dropped a product now, and we just had a private plow. I think it was Mike Zane just went down the street. Because that's just a law of the law.
Oh, all the private people are out. You see them?
Yeah, but just for a city truck.
That's good. That's good. Is the cars travel over to some, you can see out there. It looks really bare. Coming in, it was not like that.
So if you go to this control, I'll move the campus.
Yeah, see?
We'll show up the other end of the street.
Piece of cake.
Yeah, working on the ride to school drive when I was out earlier. And that's all not treated yet.
Right. So as I say, everybody's going very slowly, which is good.
They don't want to work, though.
Oh, yes. Yes. Well, you can see.
I'm sure you're looking at the phone exchange in the background.
That's picking up. It wasn't like that when I came in. It was.
They were just even taking cars off when you drove by, right?
Yep, they all were. But I had, you know, every time the weather is bad, I see something bizarre. And I'm coming into Lowell, and I see a man walking up across the street. And I figure, well, he's gonna, he's gonna stop because he sees all the cars. And then I notice the white cane.
Oh, yeah. Did he have a black outfit on?
He was blind.
Did he have his black outfit on?
Yes, he did.
This is, well, actually, this is a good time to get your black outfit on and go for a bicycle ride.
Yeah. Well, I'm surprised I didn't see that in Dragan, because I usually do see something like that in Dragan. But I said, oh, my goodness, he's, he's blind. I bet.
I just can't get over how people will do that.
I know. I kind of, I, I can't even imagine what, what he.
Well, you have raincoat, don't you have, what raincoat do you have that's not black? The rain gear's always black. The firefighter, the smartest people in the world, at least they have those green.
Yes.
Reflective things. I think that we should have reflective rainwear.
I agree. I did see in Dragan the other, I think it was last week, that there were two people running, and they had like little spotlights taped to their backs or something. It was very amusing, but at least I could see them.
Yeah.
I thought it was a car. I said, why is there a car in the side? But it's, anyway.
It's a day to take off. Take the day off.
Yeah, absolutely. Last week, I was shocked because it was so freezing. It was bitter, bitter. It was below zero. Surely you can run a little later or something, perhaps. Rethink this.
I think, I think you should run a little later.
Perhaps it's a treadmill day.
Good thinking.
Yeah. So anyway.
Oh, I gotta fix your shot on Facebook.
Well, I guess it's.
See, I'll cut your head off on Facebook. I can go fix.
Oh, no. Well, that's okay.
I'll go fix the camera.
Not, 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 that's okay, John. You can do that.
No, I gotta go fix the camera. I zoomed in a little too much.
Yeah. Well, anyway, it's, I'm hoping that Dan and Corey will be able to plow the way in here. As I say, the roads aren't bad in Lowell. They're sort of moving along. And now that you have a lot of traffic beginning, it should be okay. But, you know, bundle the kids up. I don't know what's happening with the, with the schools. So we shall see. Still quite early for everybody. I made great time coming in. So.
Yes, you did.
You know, it's, it's, it's New England. This is what we're used to. I don't imagine it was like that down in New Orleans when they got the snow. They must have.
Well, the weather forecasters I listened to this morning said it's going up to 40 today, and it's gonna be wicked windy.
It was, I thought it was windy yesterday.
So my take on that is it's like a hair dryer on the snow. When that wind picks up, 40 degrees getting blown into that snow, it's gonna be gone.
Yes, I agree with you. So I just, again, it wasn't the worst morning. So it is gonna be nice. We're gonna have some warm weather. That cold spell was not a lot of fun with the wind.
No, it was not.
It would blow you into buildings. So. But so be it. That's, it is January. Almost over. Hard to believe.
Yes. Couple more days to go.
Yeah.
And we'll be into February.
Then we'll have that silly groundhog that never gets it right. And off to.
That makes a lot of time, a lot of money for that town.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
And over the weekend, I saw there are other animals that predict weather.
Oh, really?
Yeah, around the country, but I've never heard of.
They're trying to jump on the bandwagon.
I've never heard of. I think there's even a snake. I said, well, you know, I don't.
No. No, no.
I'm staying inside when it's yucky.
Yeah.
And that's all I'm gonna do.
Absolutely. I, yeah, snakes, I'm terrified of snakes. The only thing I'm really frightened of, I don't mind the bugs or anything else. Even mites don't bother me. I have a wonderful cat that's a good little hunter. So you don't have to worry about putting traps out or anything. She finds, she knows where they are if they're there.
Good.
So.
That's why you want to have a.
Yep.
A cat in the house.
She is adorable. She is precious. It's not like a, she's like a cat dog. She follows us around. And it's kind of an interesting. Well, it's an orange female, which usually you don't have. They're usually calico. Males are usually orange.
I didn't check. Look at the paper at all?
No.
Today?
No. I very rarely look in the newspaper.
Okay.
I sometimes will read.
I didn't check the paper.
I should read it more often. I should, you know, at least read the obits to see. Of course, we're of that age, you know, that.
Well, you get a text from one of your friends, hey, did you hear that Clara died?
That's right.
Did you hear that James died?
Absolutely. So which is, we're lucky to be above the roses, I guess.
Hey, enjoy every breath.
Are you, do you have any cruises planned or?
No, she's looking at, right now, we're looking at the Mississippi for the summertime.
Oh.
So we're thinking of trying one of those. But she doesn't care for riverboat cruise. We did Viking.
Yeah.
She didn't like the Viking. So that was over in, on the, one of the French rivers, the Rhine.
The Seine.
Seine River, one of those rivers.
Yeah.
So she's looking at those.
I've, everybody I've talked to that's done the one down the Mississippi has enjoyed it. Maybe it's because it's all places we're familiar with. But they said it was really, and now, I assume, do you hit Savannah and New Orleans and?
It goes from New Orleans up to Chicago.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So there's, there's a whole bunch of them. You can get on in Chicago, you can get on New Orleans. And so we're thinking about that because there's no, just for the sightseeing of it all. She didn't like it because the boat, there's no physical movement on the boat. You don't feel like the boat's moving.
Oh, really?
Because there's no waves.
Okay, that makes sense. That makes sense.
Cruise ship, it always feels like you're rocking and rolling a little bit. But the riverboat didn't feel that.
My favorite cruise was the Cross Atlantic. Absolutely loved it.
Oh, I love those. Those are fun.
Yeah, it's just, you know, and I never noticed the bad weather. I know we got bad weather, but, but you get to see whales and things like that when you do that. So.
We saw, if you want to see whales on a cruise, take the cruise from Los Angeles to Hawaii.
Really?
Oh, fantastic. We saw a great, great time on that boat. We sailed from, I think it was San Francisco. It might have been LA. I forget. And it was a good time. And she saw her, she loved seeing whales. We were going.
Oh, I do, too. They're fabulous.
Yeah. So she was happy. Got her, got her pictures of the whales waving to her, hi Ellen, how are you? I'm making fun of her. So it was a good time. So, but she's also looking at cruises out of, out of Florida because her, one of her best friends, Mary Lou, she lives in Florida. So I'd like to get out and visit them. I want to drop in on the debutants if we can get down to Florida. We'll see what happens. Don't, it's fading away. I don't think we're gonna go. Don't think we're gonna go.
Well, time is here before you know it, you know.
Well, she loves that, my grandson Luke.
Oh, well.
Well, I might have to watch Luke. Okay. Yeah, but see, President Trump wants us to go to dinner. I might have to watch Luke.
I know it. I have my two.
Yeah, so.
And.
That's what's going on there.
I, they both play. Now, now the, now Donovan, I think, he wants to be a goalie, and which is interesting.
That's a good guy.
Yeah, he's a, I think actually he'll be a good one. He's got the, he's with his karate and all that. So he seems to have the moves. And, but Autumn is definitely, she likes to play defense. So it's fun to watch them.
Well, as long as you've got the protective equipment.
Oh, they, they are unbelievable. They have, it's mandated, they have the neck guards. They have it all now. So.
Good. That's smart.
It's probably one of the safest sports out there, I think, because they have so much equipment. And they're so used to falling down anyway when they learned to skate. So it's, it's, but I do enjoy, Autumn's getting, she's just a delight at eight. I'm quite enjoying. She's a lot of fun. So, and of course, now I have two more because Dorian is engaged.
Oh, great. Congratulations.
Yes, and Amanda has Olivia and Mason.
How old are they?
Well, Mason is nine, Autumn is eight, so, and Donovan is six, and Olivia is five. So the ages work well.
How are they warming up to you?
Oh, fine.
Are they good?
Well, you know, their grandparents are in New York. So, and, so I'm kind of the closest thing they have to grandparents. So it's, they're, they're very nice. And of course, part of that is Amanda Foss, is it quite, quite a bit. So, but they're fun. I think the fact they all get along well. But they have, they each have joint custody, but they have different schedules. So I find it very confusing. But they're not all together all the time.
Well, the kid game that they play, I don't even get interested. I have, I have them this day, and I, I get them Christmas, and you get them Easter. And so two texts came in this morning. I would always cruise out of New York until this year. I went out of Boston. Yeah, it's great. I mean, we've cruised out of both. And New York, there's more variety where the boats are going. Boston, most of the, it's just one ship. The SCL has a ship that regularly leaves Boston for Bermuda every, every week. And there are other cruises that leave, like Holland Americas coming into Boston. Alan's looking at that one, but it's going to Canada.
Ah, that's interesting.
Not that I dislike Canada, but it's kind of boring. It's like, it's like an extension of New Hampshire. Looks the same thing.
Yeah.
So I'm not too in love with that. But either one of them.
It's going up to Nova Scotia. Is that where it's going, I assume? Yeah?
No, I don't know. But I could look it up. But we've been there before, and a lot of walking. It's like walking through downtown Lowell. Same buildings, everything. So, good morning. Are there any casinos on the boats you're talking about? If it goes out on the ocean, there's a casino. If it doesn't go out in the ocean, no. There's too many local laws.
Yeah.
And so like, you're cruising through Lowell, Lowell wants their taxes. So that's why there's no casinos. It's too.
That's interesting. That makes it.
Too much regulation.
Beverly and I did a wine cruise in California.
I'm gonna kill you. Are you hot?
Yes, I'm very warm.
Yeah, it's toasty.
Yeah, very toasty. I have my fuzzy wuzzy socks on, too. So I'm very toasty over here. Good and warm. I wonder, I, it's interesting. I, the cruises, I, I love cruises. I did the Panama Canal. That was very interesting.
Are the fuzzy socks are toasty?
Fascinating. We'll see what happens with the Panama Canal. Trump is saying he's gonna take it back. But it's just an amazing, did you go to the Panama Canal, John?
Oh, yeah.
Isn't it amazing?
Well, you can get cheated on the Panama Canal. When you're gonna, when you book your cruise on the Panama Canal, if you don't get a high up balcony, you're wasting your, wasting your money.
Yeah.
Because you go through a canal, and you have a beautiful view of a cement wall.
I know. I never thought of that. I wasn't.
Because if you're not up high.
Yeah.
And, let me get a picture of our boat.
I thought, I just was amazed how, how it worked and.
Oh, it's, it's great stuff.
That's a long cruise, though. I think that's 14 days or something, isn't it, the Pan?
Well, you can do cruises around the, they turn the boat, they have this big river they turn around in. And I got there. I can't make this picture big, but I can show you a little bit of it. Come on, baby. Get up there. Here we go. That's better. And this is snapshots of people going through the Panama Canal. And you'll notice the crowd in the front of the boat, because they want to watch these gates open. And all they do is they pull the cruise ship in here, and the water goes down or it goes up.
Yep.
And it's fabulous. But if you don't have a room that's high up, if you can see the size of the, of the canal, if you have a room that's like on deck seven.
Yes.
You're looking at the side of the canal when the, when you're going through what they call the locks. So if you're gonna take a cruise through the Panama Canal, make sure your room is up high enough so you can see.
What's going on.
And you can learn a lot about your cruise ship if you just go to YouTube. You say, I'm gonna go, oh, we're sailing on the Linda. Okay, so you go, Linda, look up, and there's Youtubes of a tour of the ship. So it's, and then Panama Canal Review, it'll tell you what deck, they'll usually mention what deck you need to be on to be able to sit on your deck and enjoy the view as you go through Panama. And pretty soon, this will be an American Canal, so says Trump.
I know. I just mentioned that. He says he's gonna take it back. Panama, Panama City wasn't a lot of fun. A little frightening back when I went.
Yeah, well, it's, it seems very heavy with drug dealers.
Oh, I went, I asked the, going, well, when we went to Panama City, went from the canal to Panama City, you take one of those little buses. And we had, we had another bus with us that was an armed guard. And they had rifles and things, which is sort of puts a damper on jumping out of the bus. Like, are you sure you want to venture out to see that church or whatever site it was? And I asked, I said, well, I'm, I'm thinking of going to walk around Panama City. And the bus driver said, well, I'd certainly take off all my jewelry or it'll cut your finger off. I said, okay, never mind.
Well, no matter where you go, whether you go to Boston, or you go to Paris, if you're, if you're wearing hanging down jewelry, it's not, it's not, it's a dangerous thing.
Not a good idea. Right.
And if you're carrying your pocketbook, for what reason?
Not a place to flaunt your jewelry.
Not a place to be carrying your bag either. You want your day ruined? You're gonna have some hoodlum knock you down, take your bag, and ruin your trip.
Yeah.
You know, so you flew out, oh, we went out to Los Angeles, and we got mugged.
Yeah, it's now.
Not what you went on.
Well, Florence, Bound has wallets stolen. They're very slick there. You'd never even.
One of my longtime friends, this guy is 6'6". He's a football player. He's a nice guy. You get the daylights beaten out of him in St. Thomas.
Wow.
They grabbed him, pulled him into an alley, beat the daylights out of him, stole his watch, his wallet, took, and he took his shoes.
His shoes?
Hoodlums don't take questions?
No, it doesn't make any sense, though. They, they're smaller people down there. You wouldn't think they would be able to fit into them. They sold them, obviously, to another bigger person.
Corey Blanda is here. I'll go let him in.
Oh, good. Jamaica is not my favorite place.
Thanks, thanks.
I don't even bother getting off the boat at Jamaica.
Now, this text came in, Linda.
Oh.
And I don't know what it has to do with us, but.
Oh, I don't see a text.
Okay, well, let me press the button now one more time. I'll go to get Corey.
French ambassador beaten in Chasse, in the Congo. Oh, I bet this is from Frou. They decided to take their future into their own hands. The African politicians have failed us. Now it's justice sail on. Is that justice, justice on the streets? The game is over. The French will leave Africa in peace. Or in pieces, the choice is up to the French. Africa for Africans. That, that has to be Frou. I was shocked back in, you know, when he used to come on with us, that what went on in Africa. It's, it's pretty barbaric what the French were doing. The French and Cameroon. There was like genocide. It's, I don't, see, we're so isolated from all that here. We don't have to deal with it. Here comes Corey Blanda, Counselor Corey Blanda. How were the roads when you came in, Corey?
Okay.
Yeah?
One more text, too, Linda.
I assume that one was from, how long does it take to get through the locks?
At least 90 minutes.
Yeah, it's, it's a long time.
So you sit in there parked, and the boat either goes up or down. The process takes about 90 minutes.
Yeah, but it's a very enjoyable.
Each lock, for each lock.
It's very, very enjoyable. Hello, now.
Good morning.
Good morning.
To you, Linda McDee, and all of you who's at home.
How was the meeting last night?
It was good. It was a little quiet, about, about a little under two hours.
Oh.
But the Smith Baker was dominated the evening.
Okay. And what are they gonna end up, what's happening?
Well, a week ago, we voted to demolish it. And, you know, we have some concerned citizens, Linda, that, you know, want to save it. And we appreciate that. Really, they're, they're interested in it. As well as Smith Baker Preservation Coalition as well, a group that actually wants to take ownership of it. And, you know, not so much maintain it, but put it out to bid and search for grants and donations and stuff like that, which is also, you know, you know, willingness to take on that huge task is, is also very appreciated. But it's, this property has got a long history. It's a beautiful piece of architecture, don't get me wrong. And, and, but it's been out there, Linda. It's not like we've had it in hiding.
Yeah.
We've had it in the hands of nonprofits, the Coalition for a Better Acre, to be exact. We had it for three, four years. And they were very unsuccessful, unfortunately, through, not by lack of effort to find a developer and donations and grants, and largely unsuccessful, unfortunately. And that was pre-COVID.
Yeah.
So just think of the cost now. It is crumbling. It is surrounded by Jersey barriers, which are blocking parking, you know, and sidewalks. And I was one of the votes to, unfortunately. And I was one of the votes to, unfortunately, to demolish it.
Well, now, will there be any effort to save any of it, like the windows or some of them?
Yeah, that's what's part of the dialogue, that we can cannibalize and repurpose, stained glass windows, the facade, there's a pipe organ in there, evidently, sure.
So Cory, did we vote to tear it down?
Yes, we did, a week ago.
And you know, didn't change up my mind last night?
Nope, no change up, you know.
I've got two texts I'm gonna blow through right here. Bermuda's one of the best ports to stay, very clean, the people are respectful, not pushing their crap like other islands in the Caribbean. Interesting point, Jay.
Yeah.
And the last one for right now is, I'm pretty sure when I'm in Boston on the boat, before I leave, the state charges alcohol tax, they do in New York as well. As long as you're in America, wherever you are, they're charging port tax. Even over in Europe, if you're in a port, you're paying local taxes. Government likes to get there.
We were talking about cruises before you came.
Wow, on a day like today, that's a good topic.
Yes, it might encourage someone to go out.
Pardon my language, Linda, but winter sucks.
Oh, it does, it was, yeah, it's, but it wasn't so cold, it was just, you know, as I say, in Tinswell, they hadn't plowed anything yet.
No, the streets were okay, but it's just you gotta deal with it, it's winter, what are you gonna do?
I, that's right, you know, and it hasn't been bad, I mean, they're not blizzards.
No, cold, it's been the cold side, January.
But you don't have to shovel cold, that's okay with me, you know.
We'll get by it.
Yeah.
Saturday's February 1st, so we'll get by it.
I know, I was saying that, it's hard to believe January's over. And the days are getting longer, so that is a good thing.
Yeah, that's helpful.
Even when it gets cold, it won't least be shut periods of time. So, back to Smith Baker, it's, so they'll be able to save, they're making plans to save some of the things.
Yep.
To recycle them.
The manager, we also voted for the manager to put the demolition out to RFP and remediation costs and what hazardous materials were in there, to get a cost estimate, what's it gonna cost to demolish it.
Yeah.
And, you know, when you talk repurpose, we can't, you know, if we want to save, like, say we want to keep the facade up, okay? But we can't, you know, put the next developer on a headlock with an enormous cost, I got builders on, it's this cost, you know, so we gotta be careful there too.
Well, people that are in destruction, that do that sort of, they save bricks, they save all kinds of things.
Comment from the audience, soap operas don't last as long as the Smiths.
Good one, well, you know, it's, there's a reason for that. It's one of the oldest pieces of architecture in the city, and it's gorgeous. If you look at the features, it's beautiful, you can't replicate it today. It just not cost prohibitive, so there's a reason for that. And, you know, we can't just demolish buildings without dialogue, it's that simple. But, you know, I feel that it has to come down.
Well, I am glad to hear they're gonna try to save windows and things like that.
Whatever we can.
Because you can't, you can't, they don't make them like that anymore.
No, heck no.
The talent of doing that, and so. Anything else?
It'll be the soap opera, we'll end to your text.
It's to continue.
It seems to be dead and buried for the time being.
So, now, let me ask you, the last time you were on, you had just come back from Toronto.
Yep.
How was that progressing?
That's going well, matter of fact, I'm gonna leave that for Mayor Rourke. I'm spearheading that wonderful initiative, let me tell you, this is, if all goes well, this is going to be a transformative initiative for the city. So, I'll let Mayor Rourke explain that to all the viewers at 7:00.
And anything else of interest? This is a campaign year, isn't it?
Yes, it is, Linda, it's election year.
I do believe.
Every other year, you know. Of course, when you just get on in August, it comes quick, right?
Yes.
So, but I'm ready, I'm ready for the task, I am running for reelection.
Yeah.
In Belvedere's district, it's, you know, in just a few short months, I was able to get a great handle on the issues in the district and by canvassing. And so, there's no doubt about it, I'm running again. So I look forward to getting out there campaigning again once this weather breaks.
Well, I've heard good things, I've heard you've been out and about and you're at everything and spawning, if people call you, you answer?
It's very manageable, really, I was reluctant with this district councilor type thing. I said to myself, you know, it's been this way with nine at large, it's working, which it was, but this is really good too, you can really focus on a neighborhood. Each district councilor is trying to get things done for their district. But we have citywide obligations too, you know. So, in my case, what I'm focusing on largely is development, you know, I mean, Smith Baker is just an example again, but, you know, this is something that could inevitably be on the tax rolls, you know. So, the only thing we can do for the homeowner taxes, you know, soaring, I understand that, insurances, everything is going up. Best I can do is create new tax revenue to help offset the homeowner, Linda.
Yeah.
That's my citywide mission, the Hamilton Canal, this Front Runner City Initiative, Mayor Rourke will get into, would be huge. But we need development, along, right here, McD, in your district, the MBTA zoning of all the density that's been improved, we're working on rezoning this whole district here and creating housing near transit-oriented districts.
Really? Now, where are they gonna put that?
Well, we're gonna map, we're gonna look at everything right around here, it's a mile radius within Gallagher Terminal.
Okay.
So it goes all the way down to Merrimack Street, Little Cambodia and the Highlands.
Yeah.
So it's all about creating housing, which we have a need for, and density. So you can go up quite a bit, and it doesn't require off-street parking as well, due to you're near the train station and commuter rail.
Because they've done a lot of businesses, they've created a lot of business in Little Cambodia.
Oh, sure, striving.
They've done a fine job there, you know.
Right. But hey, you know, we need, to support local small businesses, you need residents, right? And so I want to focus largely, look, we need affordable housing, but, Mark, we need also need people with disposable income, Linda, that are gonna support these businesses. So I'm big on that. You know, we can include affordable, but entirely affordable district is, doesn't do all that much for small businesses.
Speaking of soap operas, is Fairmount Street getting paved this year?
I made a motion to get it on the list, it is being graded as we speak. See, there's a rating system in order to pave streets, so it does not become, every councilor wants streets paved in their district, correct? So there is a rating system where engineers go out and grade it, so it is not political, and I am waiting for that. And I am, you know, told preliminary, that's in pretty bad shape, so that's a good sign. But the good news.
How about that side street that you're trying to make one way?
Yes, that's in, oh, Merrill Drive.
What in the world is going through your mind? Okay, do those people think that they actually own the street?
Well.
Because I pay.
There might be a resident that does, yes.
To drive my car.
Yeah.
On a public street.
Yeah.
And if the guy wants to pay to have the street plowed and sanded, he can have the street.
Mm-hmm.
But as long as I'm paying to have the street plowed and sanded, I want to be able to drive on it anytime I like, just like Highland, can you imagine me saying, I want the street closed? I want Highland Street one way, and just because I have a lot of political influence.
Yep, got you.
Highland Street's one way, it's not right.
Well, there's a difference between Highland and Merrill Drive.
Where is Merrill Drive?
It's a off.
Cobblestone or something, what's the, is it not a city street?
It's off Rogers Street, okay? It crosses the end of Shed Park, it's very steeply, and it goes up to Fairmount. Now, back to Fairmount.
Okay, all right. Now, how far down from Mandover?
Quite a ways, it's closer to the.
Near Shed Park.
Near Shed Park, yes.
Rogers Street, so we're going on Rogers Street, we go by the car wash, up the hill, take the EZ right now, we're coming up on, just before Shed Park, on the left-hand side, this street's on the left-hand side, and I used to live on Fairmount Street. So I'd be coming home from work, that's how I went, I went up Rogers Street, took a left up Merrill, screwed it up Fairmount, and bam, I was home.
Okay.
Now, these people on Merrill Street, oh, no, 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 you will drive around.
Well, let me get, okay, at first, I have some, back to Fairmount Street, McD, if I may.
Go ahead.
So, the fires are paving, I'm waiting to hear, but I did get a great news from the traffic engineer, where there's going to be speed humps on Fairmount, which those residents have been screaming up and down, rightfully so. Fairmount's a cut, to avoid the traffic on 38, going north, like, say, going in New Hampshire, they'll take Fairmount and bomb up to avoid all that traffic and catch the lights closer, a lot closer to the lights, rather than wait in the queuing, you know? So we have speed humps going in there in the spring, I was just notified that just this week. So very, that should slow down, do some traffic calming, as we call it now, on Fairmount.
Fairmount was a cut through?
Yes, it runs parallel with Rogers Street, going through the lights, so.
Yeah.
So people are being cute, they take a right there at store 38, go up Fairmount.
Okay, all right.
As a cut through, and bore it all and bomb up there, and the residents were, so, I know a few residents here are gonna find this good news. As to Merrill Drive, McD, that was proposed to making it a one-way, coming from Rogers, going up, and it's soon through constituent feedback, phone, text, email.
Aren't you like me?
It's been, yeah, like you, it has been taken off the table, so it's going to remain.
Two-way.
Two-way.
So communication is key, tell your city councilor, hey.
Yep, hey, majority rules, man, that's what I tell them, I try and help people, but.
A question for the councilor, did he see or hear yesterday's show from Mr. Landry? A guy was here yesterday who lived on the Common.
Oh, really?
And now he's, luckily, he's straightened himself out, he's got his own business going, and.
Oh, okay.
Very enlightening guy, he might have had some ideas.
I'd love to chat with him, I'm open, believe me. I still take advice, I've been in and around this issue.
My guess is you didn't see yesterday's show.
That's correct, yeah. No, any contact information, McD, please get it to me. I'd like to talk to him, it sounds like a very good story, one I don't hear enough these days. But the South Common, McD, I'd like your feedback, we have cleaned that park up immensely. I saw children sledding there.
What plan does our manager have for rejuvenating the businesses that got ruined when he ordered his police department to herd the homeless to the South Common? And that's happened.
I'm not aware of that, I think they just conjugated theirs.
No, I was told by, no less than two, different police officers in different meetings, they were told to herd the homeless to the South Common. That's the words they used.
Okay, really?
So I'm waiting to see, what's the manager gonna do to rejuvenate the businesses that dried up and died?
I hear you, I totally hear you, and that doesn't sit well with me, that's why we.
I counsel, I counsel, do nothing, Janess, okay? He's not gonna do anything about it, he's just a rubber stamp for the manager, so the manager, oh, I love, I love this guy, he's a rubber stamper. You stand up to the manager a little bit.
Well, in the case, if you're correct in the rumor mill, McD, I'm not calling you a liar, but if that's what you hear, that's not what I heard. But nonetheless, did we not take action to clean that up? We were very clear, clean that park up, and the school was being affected.
Yes, fantastic, they're all gone.
It's come a long way.
The only problem is, we still have.
So if that was a manager's plan.
We still have the Elliott Presbyterian Church giving them free food every day.
Yep, I know.
And we just gave them 250 grand to fix their roof. So, that was in yesterday's sun. Government, some government agency gave the Elliott 250 grand, I think it's 246,000 to fix their roof. So we're perpetuating the Elliott, and I don't think, the Elliott, good souls over there, but they're just perpetuating the homelessness.
I understand that, yeah. Look, I'm with you, this issue's getting worse, and it seems like the more we do, the more problems we have.
Well, if, listen to this guy yesterday, Scott, a fantastic guy, and straightened himself out, this guy, he became a heroin addict, lived in the South Common.
Okay.
Lost his family, and almost lost his life. He was lucky enough to straighten himself out, and.
Very impressive.
I asked him, so how does the Elliott fit in? And he says, they're just perpetuating the situation, they're just perpetuating it, they're not helping. They think that they're kind people.
Right, I understand all that.
Feeding the homeless and sending them back out to the cold. And so, it's, we treat the homeless, which are mostly mentally ill, worse than we treat our pets.
Nope, I would agree, I would agree on the mentally, look, I've made some stances on the mentally, we need money, okay, the state has got to step it up.
Well, what I would like to do.
Changed a lot.
And I'm gonna wait till Danny comes, and then when I have both of you guys here, to insist that you be in touch with a professional group. Either you call Bobby Cox, who runs the Bridge Club, or you call the guy who runs Tufts Lowell General Hospital, and you say, look, take over St. George's Nursing School, which is right on Stackpole Street, convert it into a little place to live, get the, force these people to move in there. Tell Laurie Tronhan, Laurie, we need a law to allow us 90 days, you're, so, I'm a drug addict.
Involuntarily, right, I know you're going with this.
90 days, and if I'm not straightened out in 90 days, I get another 90 days. And if I'm still not straightened out, I get another 90 days.
I would agree.
And then after that, they shoot me, but, these people.
You're never getting answers that way.
We put them away for a week.
Ridiculous.
Yeah, it's ridiculous, yeah. You are referring to the judicial branch, McD, which are none of the courts, aren't helping us a bit, okay? I don't know how a judge can.
The Democrats love this, it's his job.
Yeah.
It's his job, and I want.
Well, I'm pointing the obvious, okay, we're not getting help. I don't understand how the court system can see these men and women in front of them, see that they're sick, mentally or substance abuse, you could see it, it's right in front of you, they're in front of you repeatedly for nuisance crimes, and you let them back on the street. I just don't, or seven days, big deal.
With their EBT cards, more than.
Well, there it is.
When Scott was here yesterday, I said, how many EBT cards do most of these people have? Three, they have three EBT cards, and they don't have the cards, their drug dealers have their cards.
Yeah. Well.
Lot of fraud happening there, and I don't know how to fix it, but if, why should I have two or three cards? I don't understand why I should have three EBT cards.
I totally understand you, but.
Well, you saw that, you used to work in that area, so you know, they're sold, and there are certain businesses that buy them.
Absolutely, it's, that's a whole nother, whole nother issue, but when it comes to this homelessness issue, it is time for some tough love, it's that simple. You gotta, courts gotta put people away involuntarily, whether they like it or not, whether they feel they're ready or not, for some long-term treatment, okay? And that's what needs to happen. Until it does, you know, we're gonna get the complaints on a local level, all these businesses, we've heard, we've heard it, and I understand it. You know, it makes the most sense to go down to your local, it's the easiest thing to do, go down to your local officials and complain, but we can only do so much. We're making sweeps, we're making arrests, we're outstanding warrants, we're keeping this population moving, and we're doing the best we can.
Making the sweeps, if they're mentally ill and they need to be in a facility, there's no one to care for them.
Right.
And they can't care for themselves, but, so the money is being wasted, what we're doing, it'd be, you know, put the money into a Tewksbury Hospital or something.
That's right, exactly what needs to be happened, yeah.
A facility.
So I commend the counselors on the homeless problem, Mr. Landry kept saying accountability would help.
Yes.
Not necessarily money.
Yeah.
Just because you throw money at the problem, doesn't mean it'll go away, accountability is the key.
That is well said, Jay, I thought so exactly, there's no accountability, that's what I'm trying to allude to with the courts. It is, the court system is a turnstile, and we're very frustrated, they're not helping.
You always watch reruns of City Life, they run, you too.
Yeah.
Thank you for the plug.
Yes.
Great comment, thank you, and I couldn't, I share your frustration, same thing, I've seen it for too long. You know, we gotta get some help from the judicial branch, but I'm afraid they don't take over to some local officials, they're not, they're appointed for life, they're not elected, and they've, I don't know what they're thinking, what their mentality is, compassion, I have no idea, but I know we need help.
Throwing money at us is a feel-good thing.
Yep.
It's just to pat themselves on the back, and they're saying, well, you know, it's not solving anything.
Correct, Linda, the reason we put extra money, it's been about 3-4 million the last 24 months. A lot of that was oppo money, which is just about gone.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm not saying I'm not gonna level fund things we did, but the things we did in addition to with oppo money, you know, I don't see me supporting these programs, you know? Level fund what we've already been doing, probably, because, you know, we need to help, but we're gonna do what we can. But to put any additional money, if taxpayer money, into this problem, only to get more problems, I'm going to be reluctant.
His key word was accountability, and if, I think nonprofits need to have some guidelines as to accountability, that, do you have any results? Not just, we're gonna keep adding your funding, because the need is great, the need is there because you're not fixing the need.
This guy's hitting the nail on the head. Because forget, don't forget the ACLU.
Oh, yeah. Well aware of them.
Will come and protect their rights, even to the detriment of the persons.
That is.
They're helping.
Correct. The ACLU, look, is an age-old organization. They did some great things over the years, believe me, with civil rights in the sixties. They, but today in 2025, it is a completely politicized organization that does more harm than good, okay? We tried to, in twenty, my first tenure on the council, we passed an ordinance against aggressive panhandling. Well, guess who intervened? ACLU, okay? Governor Baker, his first term, which I supported and got criticized for, you know, he wanted to involuntarily put substance abusers in treatment, involuntarily. Now, and there was a big outrage, including the ACLU. You're taking away people's rights. Well, these people are out in the streets doing drugs, sleeping under bridges, committing nuisance crimes.
And this is illegal.
And it happens to be illegal, right. And so they don't end up dead by overdose? Let's get them helped, put them away involuntarily. Well, ACLU intervened as well. They weren't the only ones, they weren't the only pushback, but they were there too. So yes, ACLU, another problem, another problem.
It's quite unfortunate that we, you know, we've lost track of what is illegal.
Yeah. You seem to get, homelessness seems to give you an extra set of rights that you and I don't have. You know, sleeping, doing drugs in public and defecating and, you know, this wasn't tolerated twenty, fifteen, twenty years ago, when we were, when I was a kid especially. But it is today. And that's, that's part of the problem. So, but listen, we, this council, as a whole, I think we're all in lockstep on this. We've really seen downtown and some of our neighborhoods deteriorate. Like the folks right here at, in the housing complex, you know, have been through, with the Smith, with the, with the park, the South Common, we're very affected too. They were breaking in, dealing drugs in there, and they were adversely affected too. So we're talking residents, businesses, our, our neighborhoods are all suffering and it's about time it stops.
Maybe we need to go back to, to a country of laws and obeying the laws.
I'm all for it.
Because the laws were made to protect.
It's time, yeah.
The, the majority or the residents and, and we've lost track of that. We've lost sight of legality.
Absolutely. I totally hear you. Totally hear you. It's frustrating, but on a local level, we're doing all we can. We're offering help and we go to the South Common and notify them to vacate. You need services. And I'll tell you another, I got another one for you. So talking to the street team, I was at a function a couple of weeks ago, the police, you know, these are the boots in the ground that go to the South Common and do the sweeps and homeless encampments, you know, they knew more than me. I listened to these people because they're the ones in the field. I says, you know what? What percentage, when you offer help, what percentage doesn't want it? Okay, I figured fifty, sixty easily, all right? He says, huh? Ninety. No one wants, he goes, no one wants it. He goes, I, I, once in a while, when someone puts their hand up and says, I'll take a bet or something like that. Ninety percent. This is what I'm told by boots in the ground here.
If they're high, how do they, you know?
So my philosophy is, well, keep, keep it up. Keep up what you're doing. You're doing great work, meeting law enforcement and, and police, fire and the co-op team and all the clinicians out there in the field. Keep offering, but keep them moving. You know, the message, I want the message to be, if you come to the city and you don't want help, you just wanna loid up, handhandle, you know, and, and take up residents and homeless encampments, perhaps we're not the city for you. Simple as that.
I gotta back the bus up here. I'm looking at yesterday's article. I misquoted the article. And it's not the Elliott getting two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand bucks. It's St. Anne's Episcopal getting two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand bucks to fix their roof. They're in downtown also.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Sorry for the misdirection there.
That's a big one, McD.
Yeah.
Glad you were corrected on that. Yeah, because I didn't see that. I'm like, huh? What?
Well, did you know about St. Anne's?
I did, yeah. Okay, I heard, I seen that in the headlines, yeah.
You still got their soup kitchen going?
That, I'm not sure. It's funny, I got a list coming of.
I would suspect so.
I've got a list of food outlets in my email box I gotta read because, and please reach out to those guests you had on, those great homeless stories. I would personally like to invite one of them or both to be on the Hunger Homeless Commission.
Okay, I'll send you Scott.
Wow, that would be excellent.
So he, so this guy can.
Hard to argue with him, isn't it?
Yes, it is. So this guy can be upfront and say, look, enough of the coddling. We need accountability for these, you know.
He'll tell you what.
He'll tell you what's, absolutely.
What are you making in the left?
If you don't listen to him, then you, then I don't know what's wrong with you. So, yeah, please, he might even be listening today, who knows? But that is someone I'd like to see. A great story like that, I'd like to see sit on the Hunger Homeless Commission, which I'm on as well. And I make it perfectly clear to those, to all the folks that are working hard and all the city, it's a very good group. We're talking thirty-five, forty strong each week, much more than that, but it's a week-to-week basis. And I said, look, we're gonna do what we can to help. I'm committed to helping the homeless services, mentally ill, substance abuse, absolutely. But when I see residents and businesses affected, I'm going to take a strong stance at the same time. So they know where I'm coming from and I know where they're coming from. But, but again, going back to this guest yesterday, let's, let's get him on board, McD.
I'll send you his.
Please do. I'll call him, I'll call him myself.
This comment from the audience, the right in society are for everyone, not just the homeless. Well, I will say to this viewer.
Yes.
Do they, does everyone carry around three EBT cards? I don't have my three EBT.
No, I hear you, McD.
And why, we are paying, take their EBT cards away. First, the first time you call EBT people, whatever the heck they are, shut off your card. Hit them right in the wallet and they'll learn quickly.
Right. You know, I'm into controlling what we can control, okay? And yes, the rights, but that doesn't give you the right to sleep in camp and storefronts downtown, do drugs openly. That does not give you those rights. It's that simple.
No, and if I, I wanna be able to walk my granddaughter down the street without seeing something.
I don't wanna criminalize them. I mean, it's not, you know, but there is much illegal activity going on for the most part in these encampments. And look, we're not, we've had it. We really have. I think as a whole in this council, because all the money we've dumped in, all that we're doing, and it's getting worse.
How can you not criminalize? It's illegal to sleep.
I know.
On the street. It's illegal to do most of what they're doing, drugs or whatever.
Well, guess what? Back to the judicial branch, they're saying you can't remove them unless you have a bed for them. So that goes back, once again, to the judicial branch who's not helping us.
Since when do we have a right to be homeless? I didn't know that was in the Bill of Rights. You don't have to, a right to be a public nuisance. I don't think you have a right to be homeless.
No, that's what I'm saying. It's, you know, legally, you're not, it's against the law to, to administer drugs or sell drugs, but, you know, it's, it's just like that we have a gun law that if you're caught with an illegal gun, but none of them go to jail for a year for having an illegal gun ever.
They're back out there the same day. You kidding?
So, let me just ask you before I lose the thought in my little head, what, what's going on with Andover Street? Are they gonna keep the cement?
It looks like it's gonna remain concrete, yes.
It is, yeah.
Yep. The district spoke out in a big way, in support of the, they like the uniqueness and the character of the concrete.
Yeah, the thump, the thump, the thump.
I'm just a messenger. That's right. If you live on the street, if you're on Andover, let's say you're twenty feet, some houses are very close, you want asphalt to quiet it down. But other than that, if you sit back on the street, your home sits back, you want, you want it to remain concrete. And if you live in the neighborhood, you're saying you're in Belvedere, it's like ninety percent in favor of concrete, so.
Well, the concrete's a great idea. All the cracks, all the deliberate separation things, I don't go for. And I don't know what we did with the school street bridge. There aren't those separation things on the school street bridge. Even though the school street bridge, it's all cement.
Yeah.
And there are no separated.
I do it every once.
There's no separated cracks in it.
No, but, but, you know, when we smooth out the surface, we can minimize that clamping that, you know, it won't go away. It won't be as smooth as asphalt, have you? But we can, we can smooth it out. Engineers can work that out. So it looks like it's gonna remain concrete. And it was great dialogue by me canvassing Andover Street and we had a forum at the Riley School in mid-November, very well-attended. And it looks like concrete's gonna win the day. I'm just a messenger. I gathered all the information I could. We had to get an answer to mass DOT. They wanted to know, what's, what are you doing here? It's all mass DOT money. So we're gonna take it and.
Interesting.
Looks like concrete's gonna win the day, McD.
Well, I, I don't care what they put down in the street, as long as it's quiet to the neighbors. Because my brother-in-law, my sister-in-law, used to live on Andover Street.
Yeah, I know. It's loud.
Clickety-clack, clickety-clack.
I know. I totally hear you.
Twenty-four-seven. And these speed humps, all it means is eighteen-wheel's coming along, he stops.
Yep.
You're gonna hear that for the rest of your life. How they slow down and then they have to hit the gas again. You're gonna, it's like a stop sign in front of your house.
Right. It's a busy street. It's gonna remain a busy street. It's not much we can do.
I'm talking about Fairmount's speed.
Oh, Fairmounts, okay, all right.
According to Mr. Landry, the drugs have, the drug dealers have the EBT cards, they swap for drugs, cut off the money and they might change. That's, is it a, is it a state regulation, these EBT cards? Or are they, is it a federal regulation? Okay, can you speak to that, Corey? If I want an EBT card.
It's a state guidelines.
It's a state thing. So something I should talk.
It's federal money essentially, but a state guidelines.
Do you not have to have an ID for an EBT card?
Yeah, you do. You have to.
But they don't, when you use your credit card at Walmart, they don't ask for ID.
No.
It's a credit.
No, if you use an EBT, no, no one asks for ID, no.
So if I find an EBT card in the street, I can just.
Yep.
Well, you, there's a pin number, there's a pin number associated with it, so it won't be that easy.
So hopefully the pin number's written on the back. Because the, the drug dealers don't have the numbers.
And they, now, I don't, I'm not, I don't know how it works. Is it just automatically get filled every month?
Yep.
Wow, so that nobody, the, well, wait a minute.
If I have three of them, I get three reloads.
Well, what if I die? I mean, doesn't the government pay any attention to anything?
We're not gonna tell EBT. We're still gonna get those three cards replenished.
Or if I move to Florida, I use my EBT card.
Can't be fired, people. We can't be fired. No matter how bad we screw up, we can't be fired. When you ask the governor, Governor, you have thousands of employees. How many have been fired in your tenure? Oh, I don't know. The number's zero. You can ask the city manager, Mr. Manager, you've been the manager for two or three years. How many people have been fired under your administration? Oh, I don't know. Superintendent of Schools, same question. I don't know.
I can't recall, yeah. It's, yes, such thing called unions, McD, it's, it's tough.
There is, there is a process, there is a procedure.
Oh, yeah, there is a process.
And if I, if I do decide to run for city council, you'll definitely hear about a process and a procedure to get rid of you.
Oh, my, really? Is that an announcement, McD?
No, I'm, I'm thinking of my wife. My wife doesn't like the idea.
Yeah.
So we'll see what happens.
Interesting.
We have a.
Very interesting, okay.
Wayne Janess, he's a very nice man.
Yes, he is, yeah.
It's, it's kinda like Vanna Howard. Very nice woman. Doesn't do anything. In my, in my mind.
Okay.
I don't think I've ever met him.
He was here once. And he, really nice guy.
Sure.
And I asked him, what, what took so long to, to get a hold? He says, well, if I don't know somebody's phone number on my phone, I don't answer. Doesn't answer the phone unless he knows who it is.
I was like that too, until I got back on the council. But now you have, yeah.
Well, yeah, now you have to answer.
Absolutely, yeah. I, I, let me tell you, Belvedere is a very engaged district, as we all know. It's the eye of voters turned out in the city. And it's busy, I'll tell you, for a district that keeps me busy, which is, which is, wouldn't want any other way.
It's a little more diversified than, than people think.
Sure it is, yeah. Well, you see the, you know, the Cambodians, which came to law what, in the early eighties, late seventies? They're in every neighborhood now, you know? They've integrated and they've done very well, small businesses, and they're in every neighborhood now. So absolutely, it's just more diverse than people think.
Isn't it interesting to see? How does that happen, that one group of people comes in and they're, they're able to create, they must be getting guidance.
Well, that's been going on.
We're gonna go to break. I'm gonna do this last comment, then we're gonna go to break. We'll be back.
Okay.
This is a great show today. I enjoy Mr. Blanger taking the tough questions.
Anytime. Bring it on.
We'll be back in a minute or so.
Welcome back to City Life. Welcome to the new people tuning in. My name is Linda Bond. I'm your host. I have councillor Corey Belanger here. We were talking about.
Good morning, once again.
Everything in this district and Andover Street and some interesting things that are gonna happen and lull, but mostly dealing with the homeless problem and some of the issues that we have.
But homelessness, you know, it's, there's a lot of good stuff going on in the city too.
Yes.
And when I first got on, it was like, you know, this is taking up a lot of time, you know? And then I actually made a motion to start a subcommittee on homelessness. So instead the mayor put me on, appointed me to the Hunger Homeless Commission, to use that and all the outlets that are there, which was a good decision. So I've been on there since October. And we're going through some changes and some new, the voting, the bylaws. And so that's why I'd like to see Mr. Landry on there, let these people know, you know, he's experienced it and it's someone we should listen to. So I very much look forward to appointing Mr. Landry on to.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I didn't, didn't hear him. Oh, maybe I'll go to YouTube and check that out because it, it's very important, at least he, oh, look, the mayor is in the building here. It's, it's very important to get that point of view because it can be done. And, and I think that he obviously can explain that you're not helping.
Right. Some things aren't, exactly.
Your heart may be in the right place, but if you're really compassionate.
It's gonna be a great perspective, really is.
That's right. You certainly wouldn't just throw a steak out to a dog that's out in the cold and snow. I mean, you may think you're doing the right thing, but it's not gonna help.
All right, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor.
All right, let's give a warm welcome to Mayor Rourke. Mayor, good morning, pal. How are you? Doing great, my friend.
So he, he is put aside to talk, for you to talk about what's happening in the Toronto.
Didn't wanna go there. I'd like to come right from the mayor.
He said, I'm gonna let the mayor run with this.
Yeah, Ryan.
Good to go, John?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's, you know, it really is, it's an exciting venture, I think, that we've taken in as a city. You know, we talked about a couple of times before, but basically the, the gist of it is, the United Nations, they have, they're broken down to different sections, you know, whatever the sections is called, habitat. And they're, you know, and they're about clean energy and eradicating hunger, higher education, you know, getting rid of poverty and things like that. And if you can show as a city that you partake in these goals, you qualify for, for funding for different projects. And that could be municipal projects, it could be a public-private partnership projects, housing, and there's a ton of, of great things that come along with, with the program. So back last year, in May, we did a, a magazine article for Invest Boston. And that led to a trip that we took to Toronto in September to, to speak at a United Economic Forum. You know, in my job, I tell people, it was very simple. I just got to talk about the city of Lowell, you know, and all the positive things that are happening and that have happened and what look to do in the future. And then, you know, April and I ended up, you know, meeting a couple of different people from the United Nations. And one thing led to another. And before you knew it, in November, seven of us, along with the city manager and our assistant city manager, went up to Toronto to tour the, the area that was affected to be a front-runner city. And we saw three different parts of Toronto and, and a city called Richmond Hill. And they showed us the development that went on in actually a very short period of time, again, of, of just one section of Toronto. They put a hundred units of housing in. They built a community center, a community pool. And it was really incredible for us to see how the, the program works and what the future could hold for the city of Lowell. You know, we were there for three days and, you know, we were very busy. But at the end of those three days, I think everybody that was on the trip really came back, you know, probably with their, with their mouths open going, wow, like what, how do we do this? How can we be a part of it? So following a council meeting in November where we gave a, the councils that, that attended, gave a recap of what we witnessed and what we, what we saw. gave a recap of what we witnessed and what we saw, and then the potential in the future of what Lowell could be, we voted to have the manager enter into a memorandum of understanding with the United Nations to have Lowell become the first city in the United States to be a front-runner program. And, you know, I will hope with, I know that the manager and his team is going through some negotiations now with the United Nations and hopefully within the next couple of weeks, you know, we, as a council, can vote on it and really, you know, expound on the possibilities of, that what can happen. I mean, you know, Councilor Blanger was there and any council that attended, they knew a lot about Lowell. You know, we landed in Toronto, we were whisked off to a pavilion. We were there for five hours and you would think, "Oh, man, sitting in a meeting room for five hours is terrible." But it went by very quickly because they were so into the knowledge and the history and the background of the city of Lowell. They were really impressed with what we have to offer. And, you know, we went from there and we saw areas of Toronto, Distillery Park and Regent Hill, that Regent Park, that totally transformed over a very short period of time. You know, downtrodden, vagrant areas with crime and homelessness that became beautiful parks, shopping areas, you know, restaurants and bars and things like that.
And the aquatic center, as you mentioned, indoor pool facility free to the public. It was unbelievable.
It was really very impressive, so.
I'm just gonna vage in for a second here about no school. This is Channel Five's no school thing. It's pretty cool to scroll to Google, ask for Channel Five, no school. It says St. Patrick's School has no school today. Well, St. Patrick's School Lowell has no school. Don't know why, but they have no school. And it's going up to the L's, the Lowell. I mean, none of the towns, all the towns are gonna be on time. It says Lowell Middlesex Academy Charter has a one up. So, St. Patrick's, you got the day off, and Lowell Public Center, Academy Charter, you got a Malibu. Thank you.
No delay in Lowell Public due to the great job that our plowing crews out there this morning, so.
Did we have a great superintendent?
Yes.
Don't worry about it.
And a great council. But go ahead, Mr..
As well, except for the hurting of the homeless. We'll talk about this again.
Well, I'm just gonna ask you, but, you know, you just mentioned that they've transformed, like, could you possibly transform the South Carmen? What would you, what did they do with the homeless? What did they do with them?
So they, what they do is.
Send them to Montreal?
So what happens is, you know, and this is happening in Lowell, if you allow it to happen, it continues to happen, you know? And I'm sure John could speak of this, you know, being a neighbor to the South Carmen. You know, as long as you enforce the bylaws and the ordinances that are on the books, things will change. And, you know, I think the major issue that, you know, people do understand this, is that a lot of our homeless are not from the city of Lowell, right? They come here for the services, which is a good thing, but on the flip side, you know, those that need the help, that don't want the help, they just congregate in certain areas. So I think the more you see, you know, the city and DPW and the co-op and the police department, you know, continuing to clear out the areas, the people realize that, you know, going to the city of Lowell to camp and to live outdoors is not a viable option any longer, right?
Correct.
You know, and what we continue to do is offer the services that we have done for a number of years. You know, whether more people have taken up us and those services or not, you know, I don't know that answer. But the bottom line is, is that you can't be here any longer, you know?
Yep.
Following the rules.
This just happened down front here, and a plow truck came along, see the barrels?
Yep.
What's the city plow truck?
Oh, no. Ha!
Whoa.
I just drove by, and I don't know how long ago that was, but I just got here, I didn't see that, so that's a very.
Well, they do look empty, thank God.
Wow, oops.
They were full.
They were full? I didn't see any.
They're on the sidewalk.
Well, we're looking out the window right now, John. I'm looking out the window right now, I don't see anything on the ground.
Are they your barrels?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, John.
Councilor Blanger can pick this up before I honestly.
Yeah, so I'll do my good, I'll do a good deed, yep.
The mayor's sitting inside Lowell.
And notify, I'll notify DPW immediately.
Yeah, we just saw you. Who was doing Highland Street?
Boy, at least plow drivers are focused, let me tell you. They're in a zone, I'll tell you that.
There are cameras everywhere.
Yep.
And so, amazing, I just got that text now, holy Buckeye, I can see that.
Yep, we weren't looking out the window. I was focused on the mayor.
Yeah, let's finish up, let's finish up on Toronto before.
Yeah, so.
No, we didn't hear it.
So hopefully over the next couple of weeks, you know, we can have something substantive in place and really we could just, you know, we could take off from there. And, you know, one of the issues that we have dealt with in the city is the time lag and, you know, going through this and that and restarting from ground zero. And Hamilton Canal is a great example of that, which, you know, Councilor Blanger is very knowledgeable on. But these people that come in, these investors that come in, it really is, it's no BS, right? They come in, they're ready to go, and they provide options of how we can do things and how you wanna get them done. And the best part about it is too, Linda, is that, you know, they don't bring construction people from, you know, overseas. They don't bring in architects from Canada, they don't bring in engineers from, you know, France. It's all local people that they use, they invest with, invest in to get the jobs done. Because if you think about it, you know, the people that are from this area know the area the best and things like that. So they are a partner for investment. You know, they utilize the World Bank, you know, rates right now commercially in this area are six, seven, maybe eight percent at certain points in time. You know, and the World Bank right now, I think I checked the other day, is two, 1.75 to 2.25. So, you know, if you talk to people that do investment, that build commercially, you know, the difference between just two points is wild.
Never mind five, Mayor.
Correct, right. So, you know, that's the, you know, the vision that this council has shown. You know, a lot of politics, as we know, is reactionary here and now. But I think what we have done as a council is taken a long view approach of 10, 20, 30 years down the line. And this, along with the Link Project that UMass Lowell is partnering in the city with, really goes about and gets it done. So, you know, we are very, very excited for it. You know, we're very hopeful that we can execute this and get something done and, you know, hopefully within the next, you know, month or so, we could have something substantive to vote on and to go forward with.
So, will this primarily deal with downtown? Do they, did they show you what area they were interested?
Yeah, so, you know, it's funny, when we got there, you know, again, I want Councilor Blanger to speak on this too, you know, one of the first words out of their mouth was "Jam," right? They knew about Jackson, Appleton, Millers.
Oh, okay. That makes sense.
They knew about the South Carmen, they knew about Tanna Street and Dutton Street. They, you know, you could tell that they did their research and, you know, they have slide presentations and things like that. And they show what could be done, you know? Obviously, there are some things that we're gonna have to do for, you know, with, you know, land acquisitions and things like that. But the good stuff is, is that everything along the urban renewal area, which is basically the downtown, that's what, you know, they'll focus on. But again, you know, I'm looking forward to them talking with UMass Lowell because, you know, if that's an $800 million project with the financing and the funding that they have, you know, how big could this project be with rates that are two or three points less than what they're dealing with now, you know? And I think that's the exciting part about it, is it's, the United Nations wants people, they want areas and cities and towns all across the world to do better. You know, they want, you know, a clean planet, you know, there's no other way around, you know, and it just, they are people that want to do good for people and, you know, and being, when April and I went to Toronto in September, you know, to talk to these people, we talked to two, I talked to two other mayors from Toronto that have taken part in this project. And then sitting down with the folks from the UN and really discussing the possibilities of Lowell, you know, they love the diversity of the city. They love that there was 60 languages at Lowell High.
Oh, I agree with that.
You know, yeah, and the things that we have done, you know, "Do you have a master plan?" "Yes, we do, till 2050." You know, and as we started talking, more boxes were checked.
Absolutely.
You know? And I was very excited to bring my colleagues up to Toronto to talk to those people that want to come to Lowell and to invest into the city. You know, their main goal right off the bat is 10 projects that they talk to the city with and to get onto paper and to timeline things. So, you know, really is a positive thing for the city of Lowell. If you combine this with the Link Project, you know, a decade from now, you know, you won't recognize.
It may not be recognizable, exactly. Especially coming along this, connecting Don Thorndyke into, and the timing of this, you know, the mayor, when the mayor called, when his initial visit in September, you know, he then reached out to me and all of our colleagues and said, "Look, you need to, we're invited back in November, you need to come see this, what's going on here." And, you know, he convinced me to, you know, so I, you know.
Oh, I had you on and you were so excited when you first came.
You know, economic development is one of my pet peeves, and I always get very excited about that topic. And, you know, he convinced me that this, you know, we need to be there and we need to show these, this organization a buy-in. So the mayor sold me instantly and was, he was spot on. I was totally, totally blown away of what was done. And again, what they knew about the city of Lowell, I mean, they knew all the industrial were gonna, this is all gonna be developed around industrial revolution theme, that's your character in the city. And they knew, Councilor Blanger, you were a businessman, I was like, huh? I mean, they knew everything. It was amazing, so.
Well, the Jam, you know, I, the Jam Plan, it's what, 30 years or something?
I mean, Hamilton Canal, Hamilton Canal, right. Over two decades.
Yes, right.
And it's just been, it's just not getting off the ground, so maybe this'll help that sort of thing.
Absolutely. We got ready-to-go parcels at the Hamilton Canal and, Mayor, we spoke to earlier, the MBTA rezoning. So that's gonna be in timely, that's all gonna be rezoned if all goes well here. And we're gonna have identified parcels that are ready to go as well. So the timing with this initiative, I mean, that the mayor's, you know, brought into the mix here, which is huge, this is his baby, but nonetheless, it's gonna take a lot of teamwork to get to where we wanna go. So we're all rolling in the same direction on this one, I can assure you that. So, great fine by the mayor, I can't say enough, I'm so excited.
Is the council supportive?
Yeah, you know, and it's, and we, you know, and there are a couple of councils that couldn't attend due to work, personal things, but, you know, every council along the way has voted in support of this. You know, everything from voting to fund a travel, to get up there and to, you know, tell the manager to start negotiations for an MOU. We have had, you know, unilateral support. And that's one of the things that this group wanted, you know, they didn't want us, you know, and they told us in Toronto, you know, "We don't want 65, 74, we need to have everybody invested in this on the same page." Because we are coming in, you know, I'm gonna shock you with a number, with up to $2 billion to fund different projects within the city of Lowell. So, and again, everything is in the right place. This is not something where, you know, there's no tie-ins, there's no yeah-butts, there's no, you have to do this to do that. You know, some of the requirements that the city of Lowell will be responsible for, you know, going forward, would be to talk to other cities within the United States of what the program has meant to us, right? And, you know, and.
Sign us up, Mayor, for that one, yeah.
If we have to go, you know, if we have to travel or host people, and think about it, if we get something like this done, and we're gonna bring people from across the country to the city of Lowell to showcase what the city's all about, that's, it's great stuff. And, you know, the percentages of the projects that the city would have to put in are very small, you're talking 2% to 3%. But again, with that 2% to 3%, land acquisition is part of that, TIFs are a part of that. There are many things where actual monetary, I guess, you know, cash in hand would not be required, but as long as that part of the project is covered through those examples I gave you.
Yep.
That's what, that's what our obligation is. It really is just, you know, they built this community center in Toronto. It was unbelievable, six floors, Councilor, was it?
Yes.
And they, you know, they housed, they had some programming in there, they had some homeless people that would come in there for services, they had nonprofit space, they had, you know, a municipal department that was in there. They built it, and the city tried to took it over, right? And, you know, and of course, you see, we had to staff something like that, you know, very similar with the, with the community pool, indoor pool, which was just, you know, Olympic-sized pools and, I mean, it was two or three of them.
And downtown Toronto, and indoor aquatic center, I'm just like, huh?
Yeah, it was really incredible, so.
It really was.
You know, it's almost like a too-good-to-be-true thing, you know?
Yeah.
That's what we're all saying, Mayor. What's the catch?
Right, yeah.
Not much.
And it's a good thing that we have, you know, skeptical people because, you know, you wanna find out, you know, what is the negatives, if there are any. But what we have done, it really is just, it's, as this council has done going forward, it's wild, it really is good.
Now, let me ask you, did the, the status of the high school being renovated, was that a plus or a negative?
No, so the high school itself, Lowell High, the Lowell Public School System, the Middlesbrough Community College, UMass Lowell as a whole, our educational system, was nothing but a positive for this project. You know, higher education is one of their vocal points of these goals that they have, right? And also, you know, those sections being one of the best community colleges in the country and it's free now.
Yes.
They love that. With UMass Lowell being one of the best state colleges in the country, with their sciences and their STEM and their engineering background.
What have I done?
Same thing.
Yes, John, you're waving at me, but.
Bobby Hawley's out there cleaning up the mess.
Oh, thank you, Bobby Hawley. What a guy.
So, yeah, it's exciting and it's, you know, it's something that the entire, you know, council has been behind, so we're very happy about it.
Well, we, Mayor, congratulations once again on this fine.
Oh, 'cause for years, we've heard about downtown, what are we gonna do? And almost every council that comes in, that, you know, the feet are put to the fire and it, it's just, it's been so difficult.
It has, you know, and we have really do have.
Renovations.
Yeah, we do have opportunity here to really transform the city. And, you know, the industrial revolution was tossed around when we were in Toronto, both when I was there with April and then with the counselors. Because, you know, in the United States, the industrial revolution started in Lowell, it really did. And, you know, it's not an exaggeration to say that we are on the doorstep of doing it again with this front-runner city program.
Well, now, will the federal, our federal government get involved as well?
So, you know, if we had talked about that, and it's, you know, the answer, the straight answer is no. You know, we are a municipality that wants to take part in the program. And again, why anyone would wanna get in the way of this? You know, you're bringing, you know, in, you know, urban economic city, which we have a ton of great things that we offer, but we do need some assistance in certain ways. There are projects that, you know, for example, like the Community Center or something like that, we could not afford that, right? We can't, you know, we can't afford the Terrific Smith Baker Center, right? But the thing about, you know, if they come in, this, the UN comes in and they have, you know, a $30 million project at 2% financing, I mean, you'd have, you know, builders from here to Tingsborough lined up waiting to get into there, right? You know, and that's where the real opportunity lies to get things done. You know, and I've talked to different developers about this, is what's the difference between, you know, 6.5, 7% and 2.5%? You know, and it's almost triple.
That's huge.
Yeah, it really is.
Mayor, that's why these parcels, the Hamilton Canal, are staying vacant. It's mainly largely responsible for the interest, the commercial interest, in other words, it's even higher, right, Mayor?
Well, there's Bobby Hawey working out there.
So, you know, we're talking about parcels of land and Lowell is, I guess you would call it, would you say land poor, councillor?
Absolutely.
You know, and what other cities and towns have done, if they have built up, which we can do. And I think once you start talking about Jackson Street and Appleton Street, that's the key, right, is going up. But a parcel like Hamilton Canal or a parcel such as the Smith Baker Center, once it is cleared, it's primo land. It's, you know, something that is right in the heart of downtown, you know, parking is available nearby, so, in both spots. And I think that's where, you know, the optimism lies with this project.
Well, you've got two courthouses that I would think.
Oh, geez, yeah, I forgot about that, right, the Superior Court, same thing, you know. And the timing is good, you know, because we're still in the process. You know, I know that DKM still is negotiating with, you know, with the Hurd Street we already have, but Superior Courthouse is still kind of up in the air.
Oh, is that the one, Mayor? I thought we had, okay.
Yeah, we still have Hurd, you know, that's ours.
So, we, Hurd Street, we have possession of, okay.
So, it's, again, it's, you know, we're, you know, continuously, you know, talking about it and the negotiations are going on between just, again, the manager and the group from the United Nations. And, you know, we're excited about it.
Spring, do you think you'll have answers and?
So, their goal and our goal is for this council to be at the United Nations in May, to announce it to the country.
Wow.
Count me in for that, Mayor.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Absolutely.
That's quite exciting, actually.
I was speaking about earlier as to increasing the tax, as a citywide mission, increasing tax base. Well, this is, this is a great lead for that, to say the least.
Why, you start the Link pro, that's a wonderful.
That in itself, too.
Yeah, and talking to the Chancellor about this, she was very excited, too, because again, you're talking about numbers and.
Well, they need help, too, I mean, it's.
Well, it's our partner, right, Mayor? So, we're going to glue them in the mix, absolutely.
I'm sorry, I told the Chancellor, I told President Sissons, like, you know, we wouldn't be here in this opportunity without Middlesex and without UMass Lowell.
Great point, higher education is one of their criteria, Mayor, to say the least, right?
The university maybe, you know, you've got the ballpark, you've got the, you know.
Meet me, too.
Wow, need more messages like that, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Whomever it came from.
Well, no, it's just, I'm kind of excited thinking about where you can go with this because with the university, because I think the university is needs some help, obviously, and the city needs some help, so it's, this is, it should help all parties.
The Link projects, just during construction of Link, you're talking $2,000 to $3,000 construction jobs. But then when a project is all done, now you're talking 1,500 to 2,000 everyday, you know, high-salary career jobs within the City of Lowell. And the goal, obviously, that we always talk about is, you know, when you have your graduates from UMass Lowell and, you know, you don't want them leaving the city.
They all do, that's the problem.
Right, you want to stay here. If you're going to have, you know, graduates coming, and then you're going to add 1,500 jobs within the next five years within the City of Lowell through Link, we want them to stay here, right? You know, so.
Absolutely.
One of the things in Toronto, and I know Consul Dakota was big on this, they added 1,100 units of housing in this area of Toronto, right? And it wasn't all affordable, it was a lot of, mostly was market rate. It was, they had their own version of workforce rate. And they do do affordable as well. And it's all tied into the guidelines similar to the Merrimack Street building that Gene Doc just had opened up this past summer and spring.
What are the guidelines for clean energy?
Yeah, so we talk about, you know, master plans, try to be carbon-free by 2035, 2050, you know, going green. And that, you know, and it sounds like, oh, okay, sure, but when you get into those things, you know, in September, when we were talking about this, I was on the phone with our Assistant City Manager, Yvonne Byers Rose a lot, and I would shoot.
That was a nice Warren salad, Dan, that was a good job, good job.
You do this long enough, Yvonne, you pick out on stuff, right? But, you know, and ask her, do we do this? Yes. Do we do this? Yes, you know. And luckily, just before we went up there, the city unveiled their master plan, you know, to 2050. And a lot of the things that were in that, you know, and we had an email version of it, which was, you know, 400 pages. But a lot of the 17 goals that are included into the project, into the Frontline City program, we already had. You know, I think.
No kidding?
Yeah, we checked all the boxes.
Yeah, it's like 14 out of 17 right off the bat. You know, and the other three were easily attainable just by, you know, maybe a vote by the council or doing this or that. And it's, look, it's, it really is an exciting opportunity for the city as a whole going forward. And, you know, again, I give all the credit to this entire council for just being behind this 100%.
Of course, and one word we heard, if not once, 100 times, was sustainability, right, Mayor? So, to answer that Texas problem, there will be clean energy initiatives, green initiatives on anything that's, absolutely.
This council, you know, approved a sustainable, sustainability department with a sustainability director just within the past 12 months.
Well, could you explain that?
Yeah, so we have a sustainability director, his name is Catherine Moses, okay? And over the past, I want to say four years, Consul, if I'm correct.
Yep.
She's brought in with $22 million in grants, right? Because we have this sustainability initiative. And so, we talk about, like, rise grants, whether it be for bridges, or we talk about, you know, grants to go out to, across from Top Donut, to remediate some land that's out there.
Okay.
You know, and we're going to need some money, again, for Smith Baker Center for mediation of.
Can you drag that mic towards you?
Oh, sorry, yes, sorry. So, you know, and what happens is, through the federal government and through the state government, cities such as Lowell, Urban Economics cities such as Lowell can apply for these monies because, look, we don't have, you know, we don't see that tax rate where, you know, we've already broken the levy and you have to go through a vote, you know, to increase taxes. You know, we had done a great job over the past 20 years of keeping us $13, $14, $15 million below that levy, right? So, you know, and because of that, because our finances are so good, you know, we apply for these loans, that puts us in even better position. None of this happens without that sustainability department and with Catherine that puts forward, you know, consistently tremendous applications for this.
Yes.
And, you know, we just had one at steps of City Hall, I want to say maybe September, October, where we had, you know, we had our federal delegation, our state delegation that was there, and we took in $550,000, right? And a lot of that money was going towards the area of, you know, Centerville, heading down, again, right across from Top Donut, heading down towards the bridge, the walkways that's there. So, that's just one example of many that, that we have been successful. And something as simple as having a recycling program in the city, right? You know, I mean, that goes towards it, too. Something as small as that or as large as, you know, a master plan. You know, and our master plan is ever-changing, it's like a living document that, you know, as times change, as technology changes, the plan can change as well. So, it's a lot of really, really good stuff that I just look forward to.
On recyc, excuse me, on recycling, I think that it would behoove you to get another Gunther that can explain to people, because that changes what can be recycled and how it, because people have lost track of what they can recycle and how to recycle.
I'd like to know, where does recycling go?
Well, I don't care so much about, at least make it clean. I mean, people don't understand what they can recycle anymore, what they.
And do they burn it?
Contamination.
What do they do at recycling? It doesn't go to China anymore.
No, they do, it's called Wheelabreder, is the company that we use. And it's one of the difficulty things about it is that the company that we have, they have to go to Havrel to dump their trucks. So, you think about, you know, you're in Vieca or you're in, you know, Pataqueville or Belvedere and, you know, you're full, now you've got to go 45 minutes to 50 minutes up to dump everything, then you come back down again. And, you know, that's one local plant that probably utilizes a bunch of different cities and towns. So, that's why, you know, when things get delayed and stuff, that's one of the reasons. And I think we have a one year left with waste management currently, and then we'll see what goes from there.
But I know that the communities are charged if your recycling isn't clean, it doesn't meet their standards. So, it is a huge issue.
The other issue, too, Linda, is, you know, back when Gunther first died, I mean, you could recycle anything, right? And now you're basically doing paper.
Cans, bottles, paper.
Right.
And largely what people are doing, the plastic, the t-shirt bags, you know, the plastic bags, they're putting them, you cannot put those in the recycling, that's a large problem.
So, people need to know, I think we've watched, we used to. When they first came out, they educated people, but I think that we kind of need to be reeducated.
Yeah, they sent out mass.
No, outreach is there, there's no doubt, yeah. It's mainly the rentals, unfortunately, the non-owner occupied properties that are large, have the highest contamination percentages.
People using their recycling barrels as trash.
As right, and construction or, yeah.
It's hard.
Yep. Well, we got, we got police, the people.
Oh, okay.
We have one guy goes out and, the enforcer, he goes out, lifts up lids and green bins and checks and leaves it with a sticker, if not, so we're doing the best we can.
I had a friend of mine that called me a little while ago and he had the orange tag on his recycle belt. And, you know, he was $25, yada, yada, so I said, okay, fine. So, I took a try by, you know, he had a broomstick in there, he had like a small little ice maker was in there. What are you doing? You can't, yeah, I mean, I hate it, man, yeah, yeah.
Get with the program, Mayor.
Right, yeah.
Are they able to put that sort of thing, is there a program to get rid of that sort of thing? So that people can, you say like the ice maker or whatever. Are there programs in the city that you can, like in Tingsborough, you can go to the Board of Health and get a tag for certain things. And certain people pick up certain things.
Twice a year, we offer drop-off.
Hazardous waste day, yeah.
Have those waste items, paint cans, oil cans.
Cleaning.
Yeah, microwaves, things like that. I do it twice, I do it both times at College Stadium, the park out there, so.
Yep.
And, you know, it costs a fee, I think it costs 20 bucks maybe. Or you could pay to have a couch or.
Waste man, yeah, a separate call to waste management, yeah.
If you could get that to me, I'd be very happy, because people need to be reminded when the hazardous waste is. I know myself, I get distracted and the next thing I know, it's gone by.
I want to say April, October, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, I believe, that's right. Now, will the historical park get kind of a boost out of this?
Again, another positive that we had in our back pocket when talking about the City of Lowell, right, was the historical park and how it came about in the 70s, how we utilize it as a city and, you know, and the way we use it through, you know, with field trips or a showcase to tourists coming in.
Folk festival, among others, right, Mayor?
Yeah, you know, folk festival is huge, too, so, you know, all these things that we were able to put forth to represent the city as what we are, and rightly, that's a great point.
Having the national park presence was huge, Mayor, absolutely.
Yeah.
So, we checked most, if not all, those boxes, as the mayor alluded to on this. I'm just hearing everything they say and I'm just like, we already do this, we do this, you know, so.
It's interesting.
Right from the start, I had a great feeling.
I've been around.
Minute one.
All my life, and I didn't know that they had the whitewater rafting in Lowell, that's one of the best in the country. It's, you know, they come from all over and there's certain time, though, I, we had them on here last year. It's a couple of weeks in March or something.
Probably the spring, yeah.
I was invited to go on one, I'm a landlubber, so I like flights, so I, I think I might have sent a vice mayor for that one, so, yeah.
But it's, yeah, it's a little dangerous, I liked watching, but I'm an observer.
So, back of the bus up a little bit, okay, when you have a city plow truck create a mess like this.
Boy, that, that poor guy, right on camera, while the mayor is here and another councillor.
He's going to be really surprised that I was on the camera. And we have crystal clear vivid video of this, this is secondhand off the shelf.
McD, I will call.
What does, no, but what does Jane Q. Public do about this? She lives on Belange Street over in Pataqueville, and a plow does this. You got, no, they don't have a camera.
They don't have Bob Hoy.
If I didn't have a camera, you guys wouldn't believe this.
Coming from you, you know what, you're right, I wouldn't have, but, um, I will call, in this instance, I will call the Commissioner.
What does the average person do? Should they call, they don't know, the Commissioner won't, might take my phone, just call the city councillor?
How about you pick up your batteries?
I got my.
I know, it's inconvenienced, it stinks, I know, but, you know, sure it wasn't done unintentionally or this or that, you know, luckily.
Oh, let me show you, let me show you the video.
We seen it, we seen, we seen the gory footage.
And you can see intentional or not, okay?
So, would you like the plod to be fired today?
I know.
No, I want him to talk to.
Okay, all right.
So, if he's not watching, he's in the street, now he dips in. This guy knows what he's doing.
Oh.
So, what are you doing? Nothing?
No, I, I with you, you're right.
I totally hear you.
I'm just asking, what does Jane?
That guy is going to have a very bad day.
Call DPW.
Call DPW.
Department of Public Works, right, Mayor, that would be my recommendation.
It's on YouTube now, unfortunately.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure they're going to do something, if they put the video, it'll be falling down outside on Facebook, they're going to put this on Facebook, for sure.
Yeah, that's a good one. Time is everything.
Correction, you call Bob Hoy.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, Bob Hoy, he's a good guy, he does a lot of good work for us.
So, while I was talking to Corey the first hour about Smith Baker and it's coming down, but you're going to keep some of the things that.
Yeah, I mean, we'll see, right, it's, you know, we have tried, tried and tried to find a way. Back when Consul Blangi and I were first elected, this came up, we offered to give it up to CBA.
CBA, Better Eka.
For a buck. And they couldn't get the financing to renovate it, and back then, I think it was like $3.5 billion back then.
That's pre-COVID, right, that's two, three times that.
I imagine, like Brian McGowan, people have looked at it, because he's done some amazing things in Lowell. And if they can't do it, then you kind of know, maybe it's just beyond.
We've been down, it's sad, look, it's not a boat we all took joy in, right, Mayor? I mean, it's a beautiful piece of architecture, but enough's enough, it's crumbling, it just costs too much. And a point I will make is, very important part of 30 pages, one paragraph said it all to me, was that the, much of the structural components of the building were hidden by decorative features where they couldn't get in, a large percentage. So, structurally, we don't know if this thing is 100% struck.
Right.
So, that in itself could be millions and millions, that's all I needed to hear, is like, okay.
It's a liability.
Absolutely, it's time, yeah, unfortunately.
And, you know, and again, we get back to it is, you know, it's a shame, it's, you know, it's lousy, but the opportunity to redesign and to do something with it, you know, to make it a positive impact on the city, whether it be a taxable property coming forward, you know, that's one of the exciting things about the Frontline City program is, you know, these are all taxable, all taxable. So, you know, if you're going to add, you know, 500, 600 units of living, you know, and you have all these businesses that want to come in, maybe we get a hotel out of this deal.
Wouldn't that be wonderful?
You know, you're talking about a huge influx of taxes, as Consul Blangi talked about before, where that keeps the residential rate low.
Well, I.
That's the goal, so we're going to work very hard, Mayor, to get this thing across the finish line, get to work.
I've watched what Brian McGowan has done, he's done some amazing projects.
We're so lucky to have him.
So, maybe he'll get involved with this.
Yeah, and Brian's fantastic, and we have a couple of other proud developers, and we have all the companies that come in and have done great work within the City of Lowell. I think, you know, and that's where, another advantage that we have is those partnerships that have formed over the years, you know, the people that have been on projects, we know what the kind of work that they do do. So, you know, you're not dealing with, you know, raw construction from, you know, Illinois, right? You know, but you're dealing with McGowan, you're dealing, you know, I mean, with Daley, right? So, you know, we know what the product will be once it's complete. And again, that's just another, I think, exciting.